Bulletin board outside these chambers. Uh, counsel, there is an agenda, including a supplemental. And with your permission, as we uh move that forward, if we could make note that we will deal with nineteen one with fourteen three. So nineteen one of the supplemental will be handled at fourteen three. And then the other late item will just keep in its order nineteen. Uh, no, the other part's the public hearing and we will have the public hearing at six thirty. So with that, if I can have a motion to approve, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Buchanan, all in favor? Opposed and that's carried. Thank you. Okay. Then we're going to invite our delegation. Gentlemen, please come to the delegation table. Canyon Creek Recreation Society, nice to see you. And just as you're getting settled, hopefully this is the same information you were provided ahead of time. I'll invite you to introduce yourselves and we generally have like up to ten minutes for the presentation and then a few minutes for questions and answers back and forth. So hopefully that works for you and over to you.
My name is Mike Wiley and I'm the president of the Canyon Creek Recreation Society.
And I'm Jim Easterday and I'm Secretary Treasurer of the Canyon Creek Recreation Society. And we run Canyon Creek Ski Area at twenty-one kilometer on the Babine Lake Road. Okay, uh, yeah, so uh, council has received our original request for support letter. And then uh, there were a couple of questions from from the la- that from that council meeting. So uh, uh, so we made up some supplemental information and sent that to you and hopefully everybody's had a chance to look over that. And so basically we're here tonight just to answer any questions. But uh, I did have a couple of extra things for you, a little bit more information. Uh, just wanted to describe um, what happens when forest licensees apply for uh, cut blocks. Um, when they do that, when they map out the cut block, if if the cut block interferes at all with recreational sites or recreational trails, then uh, local recreation officers are notified and that's Brandy Hughes at Rec Sites and Trails B C. And then her role is to look over that proposal and then decide if she's going to approve logging within that rec site or rec trail. And uh, so she does have that ability to decide. And so when, when we learned of um, B C Timber Sales proposal to log a small part of our rec site, um, we asked Brandy, we we kind of said, expected support from Brandy. Uh, and uh, for her to, to back us up when we said, well, we were really interested in having any portion of the rec sites logged. But then she explained that she got a memo sometime back and she didn't explain how far ago or how long ago. But um, the memo said that the recreation officers are not to interfere with logging plans unless there's some dire consequences, you know. It's illegal or something like that, or they're going to do great damage to the environment or something. But if it's just normal logging plans, she's not to interfere and the logging is to uh, take place without her input. So I'm assuming from that, that before this memo got sent out, she was able to make the decision that she's legislated to make. And that is if she didn't like um, the effects of the logging, she could not approve the logging. So that's one thing. That's what we've learned from Brandy. Uh, another two things is that rec sites and trails B C now are, is under the auspices of uh, of forestry. But the move is now going on to move recreational sites and uh, trails B C from forestry to parks. They'll team up with parks. So um, of course, logging doesn't take place in provincial parks. So um, there's sort of a clue as to how things are going that way. Another thing is that uh, there's a forest landscape planning project, the Bor- uh, the Buckley Maurice version is going on now. And so um, Mike was able to approach them at that re- uh, recent open house. And they were quite interested in in the letter that we'd submitted to town council. And they, they were going to take it back. And they said, oh, that fits in perfectly with what we're doing. Because one of, one of their mandates is to investigate uh, the effect of forestry on local communities. So that's the other thing I just wanted to uh, add to your information. But uh, and maybe we could go to any questions that somebody, anybody had.
Thanks, um, Jim and Mike. Any questions or comments from council? Okay, I have a couple, but um, I see here that the request remains that um, the letter of support is the main request from you to us. Okay, um, I maybe asked you the last time, are you also reaching out to the regional district since the trails are in the R D?
Pardon me?
Are you, sorry, are you also reaching out to the Balkan Achaco Regional District?
Uh, no, um, we wanted to approach town council first. And if town council uh, can lend their support to what we're asking for, then we can take it to others, but we felt that um, Smithers Town Council is the really the center. Um, it's the residents of Smithers that support and use Canyon Creek Ski Area rather than other communities, you know, that's, that's uh, that's where all our users come from.
Okay.
So we just want to do it in order. And that's the first order.
Okay, and maybe I misheard some of that. So you said you hope to get a letter from here first and then you would take it to that's the piece I missed. Where would it go next? Like, would you be, I guess, my question is, would you also be inquiring of our neighbors? So Telqua. So because it sits in area A, that's really where I'm getting on.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the idea is to take it to Telqua then.
Okay. Okay, and then something I maybe didn't understand as well, um, just in the, the reference or the potential future of rec sites and trails going to parks. Is that still a concept or is that moving? Is this particular site likely to under parks or is it still just a concept?
I don't really know. Uh, that uh, that came from some remarks from Kevin Esklin. I don't know if anybody here remembers Kevin Esklin. But he was a recreation officer with recs right, rec sites and trails B C when we put together Canyon Creek Ski Area. And he helped, he uh, was the one that approved the expansion from the original eighty hectares up to eight hundred hectares. And he got us going. So he's down south, I forget where exactly he is. He's switched from rec sites and trails B C to parks. And so he was saying that he's involved in, in combining uh, R S T B C with parks. So that's the only authority we have on that.
Okay. And I don't think I have any other questions right now. Anyone else at council, a question? Um, so two things, just by way of sort of concluding here this evening. Uh, it's generally our pattern that when we receive a delegation and the recommendations here for staff that will refer this to our team as well to get a bit more input and it'll come back to council likely at the next meeting. Generally, it comes the next meeting, might not be exactly, but usually it's about the next meeting with uh, whatever other insight staff is able to gather with a recommendation for council. Um, I, I personally don't think it's a bad idea to start uh, at least connecting with our neighbors, sort of rural A and Telqua. Um, I think that that particular rec site, I mean, it does get a lot of use from Smithers residents, but also from the area residents,
Mm-hmm.
which include more than just those from the town of Smithers. Um, and I'll just acknowledge as well that it's an incredible site, uh, the work that's been done over the years. It's the closest ski area to where I live and it is um, a fabulous recreation opportunity there. So uh, kudos to the volunteers who have kept that going for a long time. It really has been a gift to the community. Okay, one more glance and otherwise it'll come back on a future agenda, likely the next one. And I'll just thank you for your time at this point then, for your work and for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
So much. And you're always welcome to spend the entire evening with us, with our entire meeting, or you can have your evening back as you wish. Thanks so much. Alrighty, where am I? So uh, just for council, I think you already understand, but we're going to go ahead with the agenda and at six thirty, we will do the public hearing. Just so you know. So that Counsel Ray.
I, I'd just like to move that we vary the agenda and do the public comment period after the public hearing.
Is there a seconder? Counselor Patterson? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. One more thing for me to keep track of, Counsel Ray. Okay. And then get so then where I think I am is the minutes of March twenty-fifth for approval, please. Counsel Raven, Counsel Elliot, any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed and that's carried. Uh, nothing under item nine, as far as I know, no business arising. And we are to counselor reports. First up, Counsel Buchanan.
Thanks, Mayor Achral. Uh, first of all, I'd like to move adoption of the minutes from the finance committee meeting of March twenty-fourth and that would include the five bolded motions.
And a seconder? Counselor Leonard. All right, I will strip over this. So if we approve, are we approving all the motions or do we need to have separate motions for the motions?
Um, the ca- the, the practice council has been to do two separate motions, one for the adoption of the minutes and then one separately for the ratification.
If that's okay with mover and seconder, we'll do it that way.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. McKinley, you're good? Okay, so this is to um, approve the minutes. All in favor? Opposed and that's carried. Okay, and Counsel Buchanan, do you want to walk us through the motions?
So one by one?
Please.
Okay. Getting the page here a minute.
And you want me to read them?
Um, I was going to, Counsel Ray, what are you?
I'm happy to move this one because Counsel Buchanan one uh, may want to vote against it.
Counsel Ray, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'll move that the sixty-five thousand dollar Chamber of Commerce contract increase be removed from the twenty-twenty-five budget.
Is there a seconder? Counsel Raven seconds and comments? I'll just make the comment then, if no one does, that um, making the decision to root from the budget, council still has the opportunity to deal with the request at a future date, just so that it's clear. Um, last chance, any other comments? All in favor? Opposed? The motion passes with Counsel Buchanan opposed. Okay, Counsel Buchanan, thanks Counsel Ray for that.
Okay, and then um, page thirty-three. Um, I moved that the finance committee recommend that council utilize the non-market change to fund reserve transfer increases and deferred staffing costs.
Thanks, Counsel Buchanan, a seconder. Counsel Raven seconds. So that we skipped one, but let's deal with the one that's on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And that one's carried.
Okay, and then I'll also move from page thirty-two that the finance committee recommend that council approve the budget amount of thirty-five hundred dollars for the Smithers Public Libraries twenty-twenty-five accounting and year-end financial support.
And a seconder, Counsel Ray, discussion? Um, in favor, all in favor? Opposed and that's carried.
And then next of all, I'll move that the finance committee recommend that council direct staff to prepare the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-nine financial plan bylaw.
And a seconder, Counsel Patterson, discussion? All in favor? Opposed and that's carried.
And finally, I'll move that the finance committee recommend that council deny the Buckley Valley Lakes District Airshed Management Society's funding request of fifteen hundred dollars for the purposes of continued implementation of the Clean Air Plan and preliminary work towards an updated Clean Air Plan.
And a seconder, please? Counsel Elliot, discussion? Counsel Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Achral. Just as a member uh, who sits on this particular society, um, I just wanted to be clear that um, one of the reasons why I voted or will continue um, to vote against it is just around the lack of clarity on how that fifteen hundred actually advanced um, the Clean Air Plan. Um, but looking forward to continuing conversations with the society moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Patterson. Any others? All in favor? Any opposed and that's carried. And Counsel Buchanan?
Uh, two other items. Um, on April fourth, I attended the Arts on Stage Evening at Della Herman, sponsored by the Be the Arts Council. Wonderful evening showcasing a lot of local talent. And I just want to do a shout out to Be the Arts Council for the wonderful job they do of supporting arts in our community. There was even a spoof of a town council meeting with Mika Mayor being the mayor and it was quite hilarious. And then um, on April fifth, I attended the twenty-twenty-five Smithers Community Business and Excellence Awards Evening. I just want to thank the chamber for the great job they did on hosting that evening. Um, so many worthy recipients of the various awards that evening. And uh, I was really struck again by how many young entrepreneurs there are in this community. I find that incredibly encouraging. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Buchanan. Counsel Elliot?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, last week on the first, second and third of April, uh, actually first, sorry, second, third and fourth of April, I attended Kofi Conference in Prince George uh, with the mayor, Buzz Achral, and uh, Counsel Laura Leonard, as well as our active uh, Officer Jill. Sorry, Bearman. Um, and uh, it was a very informative session this year. Uh, a few little different things that were focused on, timber supply was one big one. Of course, the uh, ensuing tariffs that were already there and may even be added to. So it's a, it's a crossroads, I heard that a lot. And I said that I've been working in that industry for a long time and I hear crossroads all the time. So it's never dull moment or a peaceful moment, but it was a well-attended. Uh, and also attended the Community Business and Excellence Awards Dinner on Saturday night. I would agree with Counsel Buchanan, it was well-done, well-organized, and I appreciate a lot of the uh, like, uh, young business owners and people who are really in tune with the, the economy of Smithers. So I appreciated that much. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Elliot. Let's track the order here. Counsel Leonard?
My turn. Um, as Counselor Elliot said, I attended Kofi on April third and fourth. He said pretty much everything that needs to be said, but it was my first one. And um, just want to shout out to Counselor Elliot. He uh, was very patient in teaching me um, about the forest industry. So I appreciated that.
Thanks, Counsel Leonard. Counsel Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor Achral. Uh, so council will notes on um, page thirty-five of two forty, there are the meeting minutes from the Fall Fair Management Committee. Um, I will make um, uh, the bolded motion and then um, perhaps I might look to my fellow counselor uh, who has a lot more experience on the history of this particular motion. Um, just to make a comment if um, there's any uh, questions uh, from council. Um, but I'll move that the Fall Fair Management Committee recommends that council direct staff to compile a report regarding the Northern Saddle Club's fees and insurance requirements.
Thanks, Counsel Patterson. Just uh, for clarity for Ms. McKinley, that can just, it could just start with direct council or um, direct staff, council direct staff?
Thank you, worship.
Okay, and a seconder, Counsel Ray? And either or, if anyone wanted to speak to him?
Uh, I just said there, um, there's been some kind of, some ongoing um, I, I think misunderstanding is the best way to, to approach it um, between the Northern Saddle Club and the um, and the Folk Music uh, Society um, on the use of um, the lease area, I believe, the lease area or license area. I can't remember. We were getting it wrong at the meeting as well, uh, of the Northern Saddle Club. Um, Mr. Deere was at the, at the meeting, so was, is well-aware of, of what the, the background is. And so um, the committee felt that the best way forward and at Mr. Deere's suggestion as well was that council look into the various, or the staff look into the various agreements and see who's allowed to do what. Um, because it's a, it's a little unclear.
Thanks, Counsel Ray. Any other questions? All right, all in favor? Any opposed and that's carried unanimously. Counsel Patterson, anything else for me?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Raven?
Um, so you can see my report in the agenda. Um, I did attend the Bridging Cultures Healing Communities for the U B C Rural Immersion Welcome Gathering. Um, and I found it really interesting to learn more about that program, about how they bring in um, residents to more rural communities. Um, when doctors do the residency, they're more likely to stick around if they start off in rural settings. And I was actually able to talk to one of our uh, new residents that is in Smithers and she was just sharing how different it is going from a larger center to a smaller center. Um, she started off in Prince George and then came to Smithers, but even that has been a bit of a shift, but she's really enjoying it. Um, of course, a couple of concerns that were raised was childcare and housing um, to bring in future healthcare professionals. And then I missed the art gallery opening that happened on Friday, but I was able to pop in there today. Um, the new show is Sonia Kinsley, um, H is for Horse. And then there's Jess Olson with her landscapes and I highly encourage everyone to check it out. It is a really good show.
Thanks, Counsel Raven. And Counselor Ray?
Um, aside from the Smithers and District Transit Committee um, minutes there, um, I have nothing to report, but I wasn't there. So if somebody else was comfortable making the motion, although I would imagine the conversation went pretty much the same as New Year's Eve and, and I'll support the recommendation.
Thanks, Counsel Ray. Perhaps I could ask Counsel Patterson if she's willing to move?
Yes, your worship.
And it's a motion that's in there. Ms. McKinley, are you okay with? Um, it's page fifty of twenty or four of four. Item ten-one in the Transit Committee. It's just um, Counsel, no, you're not Counselor. Mr. Schroeder?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. There is a report later in the agenda. If council wished to um, move this motion, then alternatively, council could deal with it right now.
I'm forgetting what's further ahead in the agenda, dealing with the transit?
That, that's correct. So there is a report from uh, Ms. LeBlanc as item fourteen point five.
Right, okay. Well, it's on the floor now. You got it, Ms. McKinley? Let's just deal with it. It's on the floor unless there's a reason to hold. Mr. Deere?
Uh, I believe the timing on the two different recommendations is slightly different. One is from eight o'clock to eight P M. And that was from the Transit Committee, which the intention at that time was to capture the voting hours. Uh, but since then, we've recognized that the voting hours are seven A M to seven P M. And so that's the recommendation from Ms. LeBlanc.
Um, I'll leave it to council. We could amend it to say seven to seven. I think the intention, since I was sitting at the table, is that we provided transit to cover the period of voting. And that might be the safer language. And that um, director from area A was willing to cover the additional costs. So we could either um, modify the language seven to seven or use language a bit more neutral that just says covering the voting period. Counsel Patterson?
Uh, thank you, your worship. Um, question through to staff, would the best approach be to withdraw the motion that I've made or to vary the motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, either option is, is, is workable. Probably the easiest is with the permission of the uh, seconder uh, to just withdraw the motion.
Is there a second? Okay, please, seconder? Thank you.
Motion withdrawn.
Okay.
Okay. We shall carry on. No, no, it's fine. Um, that gives us time to, well, you can consider the time in the next one. We get to the staff report now. Okay, um, that was Counsel Ray, I think. Back to Counsel Ray. If you had anything else you wanted to report?
No, thank you.
Okay. Um, under my report, as always, the items referred to, every time I see it, I think about whether or not we want to keep it there. So I'll just say that again and council can think about that in advance of the next meeting. Um, my report is there. Apologies to Counsel Leonard. Either I wrote this before I went to Kofi, which could be. Or I forgot you were there, which is not excusable because Counsel Leonard was definitely there. So apologies, it was Counsel Elliot, Counsel Leonard and Ms. Bearman. And uh, it was actually a, a good experience. We managed to have a quick connect with the Forest Minister afterward. Um, on behalf of the uh, uh, our Forest, Community Forest Corporation. So that was great to be able to have that meeting. Um, just a couple of other things. I was at the Chamber Awards as well. And on behalf of the town, I was able to award the residential building award to the owner of thirty-four eighteen railway. I could remember the address and I couldn't remember the owner's name. So apologies, that's how far I got. Uh, but the builder was there to receive the award. And then today's been kind of a hair straight back day. Had a, just a catch-up meeting with our C M P this morning and met with the temporary um, Health Services Administrator who's covering for Mr. Hickish while he's on leave. Sophie, Sophia Amzal, so had a good meeting. Um, uh, in, in general, things are in good shape at the hospital. I think we're doing really well with the staff that's there and the commitment from them to keep everything running well. And so I think kudos have to go to the people who work there. Uh, two of the issues that continue to be a challenge for recruitment are housing and childcare. So that's the second time tonight. We've heard that and we're early on in this meeting. Um, so yeah, that's, that's an ongoing challenge as they try to bring people in. And also had um, N C L G A Executive Committee meeting and I wrote down something else and I can't read my writings, so we'll just leave that. Okay, that's it. Uh, Counsel Raven?
Um, I was just wondering, I was reading about your um, your meeting about restoring the full complement of four Crown Council to the Smithers Office. Would you mind expanding on that a little bit?
Yeah, sure. It was actually a really great meeting. Mr. Deere was there. It was uh, sort of last minute. The representative from the B C Crown Council Association was traveling and contacted Ms. McKinley, who was able to pull a meeting together fairly quickly. So she described really what happens on the backside with Crown Council. She was here as a representative of the Crown Council Association rather than her day job. And she likened it to a union rep if you had to, although it's a professional association versus that. And she let us know that our complement of regular crown here are four and we're down one. And we're all aware that there is currently, you know, um, I, I don't think hiring freeze is the right language, but uh, directive from the province not to increase. But we know what's happening in terms of things moving slowly from uh, police to Crown to court. And knowing that we are missing a Crown Council, that's, as she repeated, twenty-five, we're twenty-five percent understaffed. And of the three that are there, we also know that they're people and they're going to have times that they're not there and it just makes it slower. So it's something that I think we ought to be aware of when we're thinking about advocacy and the things that we might want to ask for to keep as high as we can, the opportunity for things to work well through the criminal justice system here. And if there's a blockage simply in not having enough people working in Crown, that's an issue. So I think it's there just as a reminder, so that when we have an opportunity to talk to the provincial government, that this seems like a good position to fill, not leave this one empty or else we're going to feel it backed up. That this seems like a good position to fill, not leave this one empty, or else we're going to feel it backed up. As we do already, when there's a a little bit of a, you know, um, the wheels are stuck in terms of getting charges through. Uh, Counsel Ray and Counsel Patterson.
I'm sorry, through to staff, just if if we're still at the point in the in. Our advocacy planning, if we could actually move to add that.
Um, we are certainly at that step. Um, staff will intend to be intend to bring back some more information respecting U B C M uh during the. May twenty-first Committee of the Whole for Council, so um we can certainly uh if council were to resolve it, we can certainly bring that item forward during that time as well.
Yeah, I'll move that council requests that the issue of. Uh, restoring full complement of Crown Council be added to our advocacy list.
And a seconder? Counsel Patterson? Any further comments on that? All in favor? Any opposed, and that's carried. Counsel Patterson, you had your hand up earlier too.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Just on the March thirty-first, um, the meeting uh that her worship had with the Smithers seniors. And the long-term care planning request for increased advocacy, is that just specific to the uh proposed facility? Or was there additional requests for advocacy?
Um, essentially, it was a call to figure out where are we and what do we do to make it go faster? So um, the the Senior Society was having a meeting last week. And they wanted to be able to provide an update on where we are in the project. And um it came with, you know, uh, an understandable sense. That we are experiencing an urgent situation in terms of long-term care and openings that people are not being able. To move into the long-term care facility because it's full. The assisted living facility is full and uh patients are backing up into the hospital. So where we would normally have acute care beds, we have patients living under long-term. It's the same situation we were in. Last year, and despite the good announcement that there's some long-term term care beds coming to Smithers. They're not here yet. They're not going to be here for a while, so I think that was what um was concerning them, and they wanted to discuss it amongst themselves. And I would expect we'll hear back from them um as they'll ask us to keep pressure up, to try to make things go as quickly as possible. Just follow up, Counsel Patterson, go to Counsel Ray.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Uh, question through to staff. We do have that on our list for advocacy at U B C M, correct?
Mr. Schroder, if you remember, I'm not sure we've done U B C M yet.
I don't believe so. Not not that comes to mind, though.
We did the um, we did the resolutions for N C L G A. And so we will have an opportunity to talk about U B C M coming as well. That deadline's usually just a little later, simply because the conference is a little later. But that that's sort of where we are in that resolution and um requests for meetings. Counsel Ray.
So I'm just trying to check in and see if my memory was correct. The planning for ours was supposed to start in twenty twenty-six, is that correct?
Um, I can look to staff or whatever latest update. I think there's going to be some initial groundwork this year. Um, so we're we're at the bare bones start with the intention of doors open in twenty thirty. Anything additional, Mr. Allen? Is that sort of it? Is anyone who knows what's going out, going on out there, Mr. Schroder?
Sorry, this is just a side conversation, but um, that's right, uh, I did just double check in the the long-term care facility, the. Um, more of an update for council, that is on the list of of U B C M topics, and my apologies for that.
Okay, uh, Counsel Ray.
Just one thing for us to remember is if one of the other ones that is going first is delayed at all, ours is also delayed. Um, so we actually need to advocate not only for our own, but to make sure that they keep to the timelines that were promised to us with the other uh projects as well.
Thanks, Counsel Ray. All right, just sort of a swirl around the table since that one got a little bit jumbled. Okay. Alrighty. In that case, where do I think we are? We're gonna move ahead to the fourteens. Um, so fourteen one, just a recommendation from staff as a follow-up to our delegation. That we um direct staff to provide a report, Mr. Schroder.
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to make this one a little bit more complex, because I think that's what I like to do this evening. Um, for council's information, there is currently a motion uh that was postponed. Um, unfortunately, that was not included uh on tonight's um meeting. However, council could choose to consider the motion. Uh, right now, I can verbally um read it, uh, and we could have it included in the uh in the agenda that way. Um, or alternatively, council uh staff could bring back the information at the next regular meeting.
Can you tell me what was the timeline on the postponement?
So the postponement was that the item uh, the the. Um, resolution would come back when additional information was received by council from the um Canyon Creek Recreation Society.
Okay, I guess that's now, and so we could. I mean, technically, I think the motion of postponement comes back on the table. Because we have the information, so we could receive that. Um, it just puts it back on the table. So the original motion was what? We've got the motion postponement.
So the original motion was uh R twenty-five point zero nine one, moved by Counsel Raven, seconded by Counsel Bukma. That council authorized the mayor to sign a letter in support for the Canyon Creek Recreation Society's Letter to the Minister of Forests. Requesting a change of regulation slash policy concerning volunteer societies that operate recreation sites and trails. Under a partnership agreement with Rec Sites and Trails B C.
My head's just clogging with procedure, not the item itself. Um, perhaps help me, Mr. Schroder. It seems to me that the item must come back on the table. It was postponed until information was received. We received it today.
That that's correct. The item, um, unfortunately, wasn't brought forward, so it's it's not a an obligation of council to consider it. So council could choose to um ignore this and and say we'll deal with it at the next regular meeting. Um, alternatively, council could choose to to take up the motion right now. Both would be valid options.
Okay. Um, regardless of how we get there, it's my sense we should put it forward until we get the staff report. So we could either put it on the table and postpone again, or take the second option that Mr. Schroder has indicated. Which I think is that we just move ahead with the item as it's in front of us, the recommendation that you've got in front of us.
Uh, that that's correct, Mayor.
You are doing that thing. All right, Counsel Ray.
Um. I I, the information that was provided to us to me is sufficient for me to provide my support. Um, and I just think about staff capacity. I don't know if they're gonna. I don't know if I want to have the staff spend the time to dig up. Anything further, I think. I I think I've seen enough to be comfortable with putting my support behind it.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I don't get myself into a procedure ball up here. Um, I'm just gonna look to the table. An option is, we simply bring the motion forward. If we're talking about delaying it, I don't want to discuss it. If people want to discuss it, let's bring the motion forward. So I just want to get the sense here. Do you want it on the table now? Actually, we don't need a motion because it ought to just come to the table if I'm doing my interpretation. So I'm gonna try to read the room right, fifty fifty chance. And the motion that was postponed is back on the table. Ms. McKinley, are you okay? Okay, so generally, the motion we can get Mr. Schroder to read it again, so we're speaking to it. Is that we're going to provide a letter of support, but Mr. Schroder, please just read it again.
Thank you, Mayor. So the the motion reads exactly that council authorized the mayor to sign a letter in support. For the Canyon Creek Recreation Society's Letter to the Minister of Forests. Requesting a change of regulation slash policy concerning volunteer societies that operate recreation sites and trails. Under a partnership agreement with Rec Sites and Trails B C.
Thank you. And do we need to have who the mover and seconder were, or is?
The mover was Counsel Raven and the seconder was Counsel Bukma.
Okay, that's on the table, folks. Counsel Patterson.
Uh, thank you, worship. So just as per our process, um, I'll be speaking while I'll be voting in opposition. Um, I just want to say that I appreciate um uh everything that the society does. I actually frequent that area uh quite regularly, and I agree um with some of the comments that have made around the table around uh just how special that space is. Um, but the reason why I will be voting against it is just, um, it's a little bit too broad for me when we're talking about informing policy. Um, I'd like to see a little bit more information from others uh across the province. Um, if the request had been really specific to um just a general letter of support encouraging uh the Crown to work. Um, with um the specific organization on finding a resolution, I would have been in support of that. Uh, but because it is so broad, um, I just feel like I don't have enough information to um support the recommendation as it stands. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Patterson. Okay, Counsel Elliot and then Counsel Leonard.
Um. I'm okay if we want to vote on this tonight. I don't feel comfortable with the information given. Um, the threat to our future section. I'm not sure if that's how it works, where a company can just go and log wherever they want to. Um, there in the Balki T S A, there's areas that are set aside. Um, by the timber sales to be logged. Um, the park isn't, to me, it doesn't look like it's there. But I would want to consult with somebody else to see what actually is being done there within their, where their trails are. Um. I'm not comfortable with this information, so. I would be voting against it currently. I don't feel comfortable with uh with this.
Thanks, Counsel Elliot. Counselor Leonard.
Um, yeah, I'll just agree with um my two previous fellow counselors, I think. Um, while I appreciate the information that I had, because um last meeting, it was um extremely vague. So we have a bit more information now, um, which is appreciated. Um. I'll go back to to Counselor Patterson's comments. I think the ask is really, really broad and um. Maybe bigger than us as a council, um, if if there was something more specific. Um, in terms of what that might look like and um. Let me back up. I think it's a bigger issue. And one that probably wouldn't be fixed if you just, you know, a request to have control over logging. Um, in the hands of of recreational societies likely is a big ask and probably won't happen. So I um. Yeah, I I will vote against it um in terms of the vagueness of it of it.
Thanks, Counsel Leonard. I saw Counsel Ray and then Counsel Raven. Counsel Ray?
Yeah, so I'm hearing that really this isn't. The the present logging has been resolved. They're okay with it. But I think that the ask for a society that's been given control over a rec site. It's either a rec site or it's not, in my opinion. So if you're logging it, it's not a rec site. It's it's a cut block that you've been allowed to put trails in. And I think that if a society's going to put in volunteer time, if they're going to take donations from. From, you know, it sounds like this particular one is fairly safe from from the locals um tenure holders. But that might not be the case in other places, and and I think. Regardless of how you feel the balance between recreation and logging is, that it should be one or the other. Um, especially if it's being done by volunteers. If it's a forestry rec site that's being run by forestry, that's one thing. But if it's a rec site that people have put volunteer time into and volunteer volunteered money into. I think there needs to be clarity, and I think that that. Among all the other things in our forest, that's something that needs to be thrown into the mix of what we're talking about right now.
Thanks, Counsel Ray. Counsel Raven.
Um, so I was in support of this before, and I maintain my support. Um, so one reason why I like the idea that it actually does go to the provincial level is if it's happening here, it's happening elsewhere. And speaking to Counsel Ray's points about recreation being incredibly important, I have to agree with that. And we have places to log, and then we have places where we recreate. We live in the north, or at least I believe that we live in the north because of our access to recreation opportunities and to nature. And right now, it might be safe against logging, but what about in ten years? What about in fifteen years? What about in twenty years? As we do more and more logging and taking those trees down, we're running out of trees then. So we're going to eventually go closer to places that are recreation. So I think what we have to do is stand firm that we we support that and we should protect it. And I also truly believe that we should be writing this letter. And at the end of the day, we also have to look at other sectors like logging is a significant industry. Another significant industry is tourism. People travel for recreation. And the more we keep these kinds of gems local, more people are going to come, and they're going to spend their dollars and stimulate our economy. It's not necessarily one or the other. It's, there's logging to be done, but it can be done elsewhere.
Thanks, Counsel Raven. Anything for me? Okay, I'm just going to say as well, I mean, I generally support the notion of protecting. The rec site and, you know, perhaps it's colored a bit by knowing that particular rec site and the amount of work. Um, I was trying to sort of scan through this, this is like fresh off the heels of Kofi, like we are kind of aware that there's a lot of challenges. And at the same time, I'm also reading this as a B C T S sale. It's pretty uh small encumbrance. On this particular rec site, and I think probably there is room to do better in that case. So, you know, our raising this to the ministry probably is nothing more than a flag. To say that we wait, we value recreation in the woods as well. And, you know, I appreciate Counsel Ray's words. We've had a volunteer organization for a very long time. Building trails um through volunteer donations, acquiring equipment and building, really. You know, we've talked about it before, but building public recreation on volunteer hours. So as residents, we benefit from citizens going out and building trails, maintaining trails without a contribution. We know what it costs to maintain recreation in our community. If we want to maintain trails in Smithers, we pay people to do it, and it's not inexpensive to do. It's valuable, but it's not inexpensive. When we look at the trails up on the mountain, from the Mountain Bag Trails to the Nordic Center to Canyon Creek. Those are all assets delivered for public benefit by volunteers. And it does seem like the least that we could try to provide them is some surety, certainty, we hear that from companies as well. That the work they do, once they're given an area, can be sure, so that the value of the recreation is retained. Over the years for the people who use it. Again, it's volunteer paid for, volunteer driven, so I'm inclined to support. I don't remember who the mover and seconder were, because it was a couple of weeks ago, so who were the movers and seconders on this, Mr. Schroder? Raver Raven Bukma, okay, everyone's had a say. I'll just go back to um mover, seconder, in case we're in our final comments, and we're gonna vote. All right, all in favor? Opposed. The motion passes with Counsel Patterson, Elliot and Leonard opposed. Thanks, folks. Okay, and um if I could just get some help remembering to contact the people who approached us. Since I just told them we wouldn't deal with it for a couple of weeks. Okay. Okay. Um. Just note to the folks who came in, we are doing the public hearing at six thirty, so we'll just carry on for a little bit, and then we'll stop and do the public hearing. So I think I'm at fourteen two. Report from Ms. Smith with the indemnification bylaw and policy and recommendation. Someone wants to put that on the floor, Counsel Raven, Counsel Elliot. And for clarity, we're gonna deal with the bylaw and bylaws. So any discussion on this? Counsel Ray?
Uh, I was just wondering about um five point three B. Um. It says the C R A, C A O, doesn't it, will notify council during the next in com- in camera meeting following decision. To inform them of the determination to provide full or partial indemnification. Does that mean if there is a decision to not provide indemnification that is not reported to council?
Sorry, Counsel, can you just give me the number again? I was trying to catch up with you.
It's five point three B on page three of four of the uh policy.
Just one second here. When you're ready.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, Mayor, I do believe that that section could be interpreted that way. Um, it's not, it wasn't the interpretation we made, um, but we could certainly look to make an amendment there um to that that. The C A O would be obligated to notify council of uh of any determination of um indemnification.
I'll move that amendment.
Ms. McKinley, you're good? Okay. To the amendment, any discussion? Oh, I need a seconder. Counselor Leonard? Process. All in favor of the amendment? Opposed? That's carried. Back to the original motion. Any further discussion, Counselor Ray?
Just sorry, that was, it was, it's really well written and, and I appreciate having that in place.
Help me, Ms. McKinley. I'm assume, I'm assuming we have a mover and seconder. I took an amendment. Did I have a main motion? I did? Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Counselor Patterson?
Your worship, may I request a recess?
Yes, in that case, I'm going to leave a recess until how about we say 6:29? So everyone's back in their seats. We have to start the public hearing at 6:30. Okay, there we go. We are recessed.
I think that would be one hint of attention. I, I almost worry though.
All right, we don't have our corporate officer, but I'm going to call it to order. It is 6:29. And we'll just give a heads up. We're going to start on time at 6:30 for the benefit of those in the gallery. Oh, and I guess some, Mr. Schroeter will get the recording going. Now that I've called everyone back, I'm just going to relax for a few seconds. We're good? Okay. So the next item is we do have a public hearing. And I have a statement that I'll read before we get going. I'm okay to go? Okay. This public hearing is convened in accordance with the Local Government Act to allow the public to make representations to council regarding the proposed bylaw. There is one bylaw to be considered at this public hearing. Bylaw number 1988 to add a site-specific regulation to the C1A zone as necessary to permit the continued operation of the short-term rentals units from the ground floor of the building at 3876 Second Avenue, auxiliary to the commercial use at the front. Before I call for speakers, there are a couple of procedural points I need to review. Every one of you present who believes your interest to be affected by the proposed bylaw will be given the opportunity to be heard by council. No one will be discouraged or prevented from making their views known. However, please restrict your comments to the content of the bylaw. If you would like to speak, just come to the delegation table and begin by stating your name and address. Members of council may ask you questions following your presentation. However, it is not the function of council at this public hearing. Rather, the function is to listen rather than to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw. After the public hearing is closed, council may, without further notice, adopt or defeat the bylaw or alter it and then adopt the bylaw. Council's discussion regarding the proposed bylaw will occur under Section 16 of this evening's council agenda. Okay. So at this point, I'll call for submissions for bylaw number 1988. And if you'd like to speak, I just call you to the delegation table.
So I just have a, a statement that I would like-
Mr. Nixon, if you don't mind, just your name and address before you start.
Sure, for sure. So Kevin Nixon, uh, my address is 1253 Antler Road, Smithers, B.C. Appreciate the opportunity to, to speak here tonight. Mayor and council, I would like to express gratitude for the support that you have shown to us during this application process. Unfortunately, there has been a major misunderstanding between ourselves and the town of Smithers. As you know, due to the provincial short-term rental regulations coming into play in January, we attempted to obtain a business license for our two short-term rentals only to learn that because we are a one-story building, this was not an option for us. Based on advice given to us by town staff, we then proceed, pursued this application for an amendment to the zoning in order to obtain these business licenses. We thought that we were, but what we were applying for was an amendment that would allow us to run short-term rentals in both of our suites on the ground floor. Based on a visit from the town planner and the inspector yesterday, we now have learned that at no time was short-term rentals going to be allowed in our front suite. To give you a quick history on our zoning, we bought the property in March of 2021, at which time it was zoned as C1A commercial. We were told by our realtor that the front suite would have to be used in a commercial capacity, although when we bought it, there had been long-term renters in both suites for years. Because of the commercial zoning, we rented the front suite out to two different estheticians whom each left after six months. Unable to find a legitimate commercial tenant, we obtained a business license for our own home-based business, Warmeston Press, in order to remain in compliance with the town. Unbeknownst to us, our zoning was changed whereby a residential overlay was applied, making our building zoned as a duplex. We are told by town staff that this was a mistake and it is now in the process of being reverted back to C1A without a residential overlay. If we had been informed that we were zoned as a duplex, we would not have found ourselves in this situation, trying to fill commercial space in a flooded market and we could have rented both suites out as long-term rentals. Based on yesterday's visit by the town planner and the building inspector, we learned that short-term rental businesses would not be allowed in the principal portion of a commercial building, which in our case would be our front suite. From what I learned yesterday, speaking with the building inspector, inspector, the only option of running a legitimate short-term rental business on the property would have to be in the back suite only and combined with running a commercial business in the front suite. Due to the lack of potential legitimate commercial tenants and the small earnings of Warmeston Press, this is not an option that is viable for us. Because of this new information, we wish to withdraw our application, ensure that we do not lose our residential overlay zoning, i.e. the duplex aspect, so that we can viably rent out both front and back suites as long-term rentals. Yesterday, the building inspector accused us of misleading the town because we purchased business licenses for Warmeston Press. These licenses were only purchased by us in order to comply with a, a rule that we recently learned did not actually exist for our property. So we're, we're quite frustrated. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Nixon. I may have questions later. I don't know that I have them right now. So if there's questions of clarity for Mr. Nixon, now's the time. And otherwise, I'll see if there's other speakers who want to speak. And then we'll deal with it when we come to the bylaw section. Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor Rachel. A lot of what, thank you for your statements. And I just want to say a lot of what I heard from you was a lot of bureaucratic policy. And I just want to say I'm sorry that that has happened to you. Yeah, I can hear the frustration in your voice and, um, yeah, I'm confident that staff will continue to support you in your journey. And yeah, I just want to say I'm, I'm sorry for you having to go through this. It sounds like a lot.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Nixon? Okay, I'll just say thank you at this point. And if there's anyone else who wanted to speak to this bylaw 1988, this is the time. And just, if you don't mind, just your name and address and then the mic is yours.
Hi, my name is Regina Semoto. I live on 5934 Raceway Road. I'm also the owner of the Central Square Medical Building at 1207 and 1209 Main Street. And I, I, I guess I'm here because I think that, uh, commercial businesses or commercial rental is getting increasingly difficult in the downtown of Smithers. My clinic is going to be vacated at the end of June. I've had my building, that part of my building for rent um, with Phil Bernier since the fall. And I have had very little to no interest. And that's why I co-tenant. And I think that if we want to maintain a vibrant downtown, we need to enable people that own businesses and buildings and that maintain their businesses and buildings to be able to cover the costs of running those buildings. Property taxes are very expensive. It's a major cost. And I don't know what I'm going to do if I don't find a commercial tenant. So I totally feel for the Nixons. I think they're not the only ones.
Thank you. Okay, and if there, did you have a? Okay, um, is there anyone else who wanted to speak to bylaw number 1988? I am required to ask three times, so I'm going to repeat myself. If there, is there anyone else who would like to speak to bylaw 1988? That was the second call. And so for the third and final call, is there anyone else who would like to speak to bylaw 1988? Seeing none, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed at 6:38. And as mentioned, so we will deal with the bylaw at 16:03 on the agenda this evening. And council, then we're going back to the 14th. So we are at 14:03. And as was agreed earlier, uh, we can also include what was 19-1. Counselor Ray?
Sorry, worship, we had moved the public comment period to-
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. Um, sorry, thanks for the catch. So we had moved the public comment period. If there was anyone who wanted to speak to any item that is not the public hearing on tonight's agenda, uh, you're invited to come to the microphone. So anything else on the agenda, the public comment period? Okay, I'm not seeing anything, so I'm going to find my way back again. I just have to find the extra papers. I have them and I've lost them. There we go. Okay, so we're at 14-3, the report from Mr. Blackburn and the supplementary report from Mr. Blackburn. Okay, Counselor Ray?
I'll move the two recommendations in the first report.
A seconder, please. Counselor Leonard? Discussion? Or anything you wanted to add, Mr. Blackburn? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And those are carried. And to the second one? Counselor Raven is moving the recommendation. Counselor Bukama, seconds? It's a big one. Any comments? Anything else you want to add?
Thank you, Mayor Rachel. Um, yeah, just to highlight to council that these, these reports will continue to come as the project moves forward. There's going to be now that following this, if it's approved tonight, then there'll be another tender coming forward to actually do the work. There will be subsequent changes and different things coming forward and it should come in fairly rapid succession here. It's a very tight timeline to get this work done this summer.
Thanks, Mr. Blackburn. Any other comments, questions? Any other comments, questions? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Thanks, Mr. Blackburn. Okay, and we're at fourteen four, report from Ms. LeBlanc, letter of support request from BB AIA. Counselor Patterson moves. Counselor Elliott, seconds. This is just letter of support to B.C.'s Destination Events Program for their one oh six exhibition. All in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Fourteen five, okay, this is one we referenced earlier from Ms. LeBlanc regarding the offer of free transit for Election Day. Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, worship. Just a question through to staff before I make the amended motion, as we discussed earlier. Is there any consideration to conversations that may need to be had with the public transit staff prior to just making the motion more general, or is that appropriate?
Generally, they're at the meeting. I don't think they actually were at this meeting, but, okay. Counselor Ray, if you wanted to comment?
I actually wanted to comment on the timing. If it ends right at poll closing, and somebody's voting at poll closing, we're not providing them a ride home. So I actually kind of like the more general wording.
Counselor Patterson.
Okay, I will. Sorry, and maybe just a question through to staff. Is it okay that I make the revised motion as it is before we, okay, sorry, worship. Here we go. Oh.
Mr. Schroder.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And perhaps just reading, you know, what may happen. I think if council were to remove the time that has been put on the recommendation, I think that would meet the general intent that that's been discussed.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, worship. Thank you to everyone for your patience. So I will move that council approves the transit partners to provide free transit on Election Day on Monday, April twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five, and that any additional cost for the extended service hours to be covered by the regional district of Volklin and Achaco, rural area A. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ray, seconds. Any comments, questions? It's a great idea. All in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, fourteen six, we have a report from Mr. Allen and the form and character permit application for all seasons with the recommendation. Counselor Bukema?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Were you seconding, Counselor Ray? Okay, moved and seconded. Any questions, comments for staff? And a couple. Mr. Allen, if you can help me, a couple of things. I could see in the imagery that the signs had been reduced to one Beja sign, and I'm wondering if that was just the concept. There is some wording in here about the signage, so sort of whatever you know about signage. And maybe just a little bit, I mean, I like the idea of the lighting, all that kind of stuff. You had highlighted the lighting, and I had noted that the dumpster wasn't included. So I had a look at it, but I just wonder how that's all going to look. I mean, the drawings look a lot better, so I'm not being critical of that. I'm just curious how that's all going to lay out.
Thank you, Mayor Rachel. I can speak to the signage, first of all. Yeah, as noted in the report, the details of the actual Beja signage will have to be completed with a review of the signed bylaw. And the, but I can say that the proposed signage does look in compliance with the signed bylaw as the drawings currently show. And then the site itself, it was noted in the report that there's an existing encroachment into the side yard against the laneway. And that, so the existing building would be and property would be protected under the existing non-conforming part of the Local Government Act. But with that reduced setback, it does make the requirement for screening the dumpster very, very difficult from a logistics and site operations point of view. So at this time, that was not going to be considered part of the development permit itself. It was just going to address the, basically, the form and character improvements to the building.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bukema.
Thanks, Mayor Rachel. Personally, I love the plan for the building. And in my mind, anytime someone wants to beautify an existing building in town, I am all for it. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Bukema. Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, worship. Question through to staff. Are we considering for sort of these major renovations or infrastructure projects around some of the crime prevention through environmental design? So, for example, you mentioned the lighting. So I'm thinking on both cross-sections of the alleyways. Is that something that we would consider having the proponent add?
Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mayor Rachel. Yes, during the staff technical review meetings on the applications, SEPTED is definitely part of the review. And I believe the lighting that was proposed on the building does address any SEPTED concerns. I think the rear of the building, if Counselor Patterson, if that's what you're referring to, there's not a lot of, like alcoves or projections in towards, into the building, providing that those areas that are, that could be hiding places. So I don't think lighting was required along the back lane. Yep.
All righty, anyone else? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Fourteen seven, report from Mr. Dewar on the RBA Long-Term Development Plan and Twenty Twenty Five Annual Development Plan with the recommendation. Counselor Raven moves. Counselor Bukema, seconds? Questions or comments? Anything you wanted to? Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, worship. Just a general comment, just that I found some of the grammar within under item two. For example, it says the town of Smithers is committed to strengthening relationships with the First Nations. Typically, we would just say First Nations. And then further down, again, we say with Witsuitin, where again, we say with the Witsuitin Nation or Witsuitin First Nation. And again, on page one oh six of two forty, just similar comments just around, just maybe potentially re-reviewing the grammar. So, for example, strengthening relationships with the First Nations, and again, relationship with Witsuitin, just for consideration.
Any other comments? All in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Okay. And we have nothing under fifteen, so we are up to the sixteens. First up, sixteen one, parks and open spaces. And for adoption, Counselor Raven moves. Counselor Bukema, seconds? Any comments? All in favor? And that's carried. Sixteen two, bylaw nineteen ninety, indemnification. Counselor Ray, moving?
First reading, yes.
Thank you. And seconder, Counselor Raven, seconds? I'll just vote, all in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. Second reading. Counselor Ray, Counselor Patterson, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? And that's carried. And third reading, please, Counselor Patterson, Counselor Elliott, discussion? All in favor? That's carried. Okay. We are back to sixteen three. So we have it for first reading. I am actually, for my own benefit, going to call a little recess here. I just have some questions. So with the permission of the table, I'm just going to recess for five minutes. If you don't mind. So we're at six fifty-one, apparently, just rolled over. Okay. Sorry, everyone, thanks for your patience. So as I've had to ask many times this evening, Ms. McKinley, where am I in terms of motions? We've done first reading. That's through. We're at second reading on the table. Okay, we're requiring a mover and seconder for second reading in order to pursue. No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be at third. Mr. Schroder.
Thank you very much, Mayor. With respect to bylaw number nineteen eighty-eight, we are on third reading for council consideration. There is no mover or seconder.
Okay. Maybe just give me a sec, and then we'll just have, I'm going to, I'll take Mr. Schroder's advice if I'm stepping too far out of line here. I think we, I heard some things here tonight that were new to me. And so where my mind is going right now is getting a little bit of feedback from staff on what our options are. So we do, we do have a here-for-through reading. So, Mr. Schroder, correct me anytime I'm stepping outside the legal framework here. And I saw hands from council, which may be to move in second. I'm leaning toward getting a bit of a break here and bringing this back to council with full further information. Maybe I'll hold there. I'm going to look to staff for a bit of advice, and I'm not sure if the hands were up, were to move in second, or if you had comments or questions. Okay, Counselor Ray, and then we'll go to Counselor Patterson.
Well, I know that generally speaking, after you've had a public hearing.
Okay. Sorry, everyone. Thanks for your patience. So as I've had to ask many times this evening, Ms. McKinley, where am I in terms of motions? We've done first reading. That's through. We're at second reading on the table. Okay, we're requiring a mover and second or for second reading in order to pursue. No, we wouldn't. We wouldn't be at third. Mr. Schroder.
Thank you very much, Mayor. With respect to bylaw number nineteen eighty eight, we are on third reading. For for counsel consideration, there is no mover or seconder.
Okay. Maybe just give me a sec and then we'll just have, I'm gonna I'll take Mr. Schroder's advice if I'm stepping too far out of line here. I think we, I heard some things here tonight that were new to me. And so where my mind is going right now is getting a little bit of feedback from staff on what our options are. So we do, we do have it here for through readings. So Mr. Schroder, correct me anytime I'm stepping outside the legal framework here. And I saw hands from council, which may be to move in second. I'm leaning toward getting a bit of a break here and bringing this back to council with full further information. Maybe I'll hold there. I'm gonna look to staff for a bit of advice and I'm not sure if the hands were up were to move in second or if you had comments or questions. Okay, Counselor Ray, and then we'll go to Counselor Patterson.
Well, I, I, I know that generally speaking, after you've had a public hearing, it's not best to postpone, but having heard what we heard today, I'm willing to have to have another public hearing so that we can find out all the information beforehand.
Thanks, Counselor Ray. Counselor Patterson. Okay. I concur. And yeah, so I think we have another meeting in April. There are some timelines that need to be considered in this, but we can get a report back to this table still in the month of April. So yeah, it does. It does put at risk the public hearing. I concur with Counselor Ray. I'd rather have another public hearing and be able to have a bit more information back from staff and consider our options going forward. Any comments from staff before I look for a motion to postpone? I'm just hesitating, Mr. Schroder, just for legal reasons. If not, I don't expect your opinion on the matter, but just legal.
Thank you very much, Mayor Achill. Hearing councils perspective on the public opinion, on the public hearing, we could certainly host a second one, just acknowledging for council that as long as council does not receive new information between now and when this bylaw would be adopted, this council could validly move forward without consider, without another public hearing. But I, I think, you know, for, for best practice, another public, public hearing would certainly be the, the right approach.
Yeah, thanks for that. I think the way I'm feeling right now is, is the desire for more information. So and I, I'm sorry, Mr. Nixon, at this point, without the will of the table, we're just not at a position where we can do a back and forth. We're outside the public hearing now. So because we had a little trip up with my last motion postponed, I'm just gonna look to the table and really make sure there's no other comments, because once we have a motion postponed, that's all we can talk about. So any other discussion on the matter before I hear a motion to postpone, Counselor Ray?
I'm just, I recognize that this is probably another bit of a stumbling block and apologize for that, but I think the process to postpone is the right way to go and especially since this was designed to to specifically address your situation and I don't think, it's not like we're holding anybody else up. And my, I think all of council's desire would be to make sure that we're doing our best to, to to come to a solution that, that works for everybody. So yeah.
Okay. Was there anything else? All right, then if someone wants to make, let's just, Mr. Schroder, so that we get the right postponement clause in there. Looking for a motion to postpone. It, does it make sense to identify the next council meeting date?
With some of the ongoing time limitations, I believe it does.
I don't know that date, so hopefully you do, Counselor Ray. Twenty ninth, there we go.
I'll move that this item be postponed until the April twenty ninth meeting, regular council meeting.
Thank you. Seconding, seconded by Counselor Buchanan. Discussion limited to postponement. Any discussion? All in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Okay. All right, council. Thanks, folks. We are at correspondence letter from Ms. Harris. No, I'm missing something.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Just, just wondering if council was wishing to provide that direction in a motion to prepare a report with additional information respecting by law nineteen ninety, nineteen eighty eight during the second meeting, meeting of April.
Thanks, Mr. Schroder. Counselor Raven moves. Ms. McKinley, are you okay with that? And a second or Counselor Leonard seconds. I see quizzical looks.
Sorry, I hope I'm, I'm, well, actually, I hope I was dumb and wasn't paying attention properly, but if we're bringing the bylaw back before we get that report, how does that help us deal with the bylaw?
Mr. Schroder.
Uh, thank you very much. The second meeting in April would be April twenty ninth, the second regular meeting.
Yeah, with the changes, I kind of forgot. Thanks.
Okay, that's all right. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Anything else on that one? Okay. Then I think I'm hopping to the seventeens, the letter from Ms. Harris. Cool, the building's a hundred years old. I can't remember what she's asking for. Oh. I did actually have an idea. Any comments from? Counselor Ray.
Well, I'm just reminded of our recent conversation about the Baldly Valley Airshed. And kind of feel in some ways, this is different, but the actual intent of not providing the the airshed management with money was kind of seems to apply in this situation to me as well.
Thanks, Counselor Ray. Counselor Leonard.
Yeah, I, you know, when I read it, same thing, just, there's just no funding policy in place. So that is where I sort of am leaning towards, but it is a town owned building and it is turning a hundred. So my question is more around, is there some sort of funds or way we can participate as a tribute to, to our own building turning a hundred?
I mean, what we used before for small amounts is council contingency. I don't know that we've tackled that yet. So, Mr. Doerr?
Yeah, if council so chooses, we could find some operational budget to, to accommodate that.
Does anyone know, I don't even remember if we've abused any money out of council contingency. I think there's, there's been like a thousand or fifteen hundred dollars in there in the past. We don't have a finance recollection here, but I mean, I was even thinking five hundred dollars. Just something to contribute. Mr. Schroder's looking, but either between council contingency or I, I think that's probably the right place is to take it out of council contingency. We've done that in the past for like Remembrance Day celebrations, things like that, where we didn't have a funding source, Mr. Schroder.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Council does maintain a healthy contingency fund. Six thousand dollars was the amount budgeted, so there is a good, a good, healthy amount.
Okay, thanks for that information. Counselor Ray.
I, I, I hate to get sticky, but I'm still stuck on saying no to the airshed management. The one thing I think might get us around is if we offered to pay for something specific rather than give a, a, a large amount of money. Maybe we buy the cake, something like that.
Counselor Ray, I think you're being sticky. I, I, I concur with what Counselor Leonard said. It's our building. It's a hundred years old. It's used by the arts community. And this is a celebration for the community, so I don't know what a cake costs. Cake costs five hundred dollars. I'm all in. And otherwise, I meant as supporting it with five hundred dollars, Mr. Schroder.
Thank you very much, council. I will just acknowledge that the Central Park Building Society is listed under the, uh, under the policy. Finn dash zero two seven or whatever it may be more specifically. As one of the, one of the nonprofits that we have provided a building to, you know, thus providing some level of support. So there is a policy background for council to provide some additional support, if, if that was what, what was wished.
Thank you. I saw Counselor Raven and Counselor Patterson.
Yeah, I, I support donating the five hundred dollars towards this because again, it's a hundredth anniversary celebration for one of our buildings and I don't think that this is going to happen very often. I can only think of it maybe happening a couple of times. So I fully support using this money for this and with the understanding that it's, it's not an annual thing.
Thanks, Counselor Raven. Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, worship. So a question through to staff. I have a draft motion prepared, but a motion would be appropriate, correct? Ms. McKinley, I will go slow. That council direct staff to donate five hundred dollars on behalf of town council to support the Central Park Building one hundredth anniversary. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second or Counselor Raven seconds? Counselor Elliott seconds too? Counselor Ray?
I'll, I'd like to add an amendment with the funding source to be council contingency.
So a second or for the amendment, Counselor Raven seconds? Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor? Any oppose the amendment carries? To the motion, Counselor Ray.
Yeah, I'm just because I kind of spoke against Mr. Schroder's words helped me decide that it's okay. And that, that, that is the difference.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed and that's carried? Okay. And we are at the eighteens. Is there anything folks would like to bring forward? Counselor Patterson?
Uh, thank you, worship. More just a, a question around, like I've noticed this key theme around asking for support for advocacy around a psych, pardon me, psychiatric care facility in Northern B C. And I apologize because you've told me about N C L G A quite a bit as far as resolutions, but is this what we can expect when we actually attend the conference? This would be something that would come forward and we would decide at that time if we were in favor or?
Sure. Can you just connect me to what page you're on?
Uh, sorry, worship, that would be, it was referenced in multiple eighteen's, but eighteen three. And then again, in, oh, I apologize. It was just eighteen three, but from a number of individuals, I guess.
Okay, and your question was, can you expect resolutions like this at N C L G A?
Yes.
Yes. Yep. Counselor Ray.
I'm just, I think a lot of the reason why some towns send this out is so that they can provide background information. Because a lot of the time at the, at the conventions, the resolutions just come back and it's usually just a very brief blurb and then the whereas and then the resolution and given the time, there's not a lot of time to speak to it as well. So some, some towns do take, take this extra step of sending out the information ahead of time.
Go ahead, Counselor Patterson.
Uh, thank you, worship. And just a follow up question. How does that work as we're individual representatives, but we represent the town of Smithers? Does council have to have a conversation ahead of time on the resolutions that we would support or do we vote as individual members when we're present?
You definitely vote as an individual if, you know, if there were something, you know, like now I'm on the one, the regional secure psychiatric care facility. You know, if that were something that we were all in total agreement about, it might be something we were creating a resolution on as well. I think we've had that conversation here before where it's like, well, we don't have to do that. They're doing that. We can kind of save the, the resolution writing time. But when the time comes, you know, if I thought this was a really great idea and you didn't, we vote. So we, we don't have a like a group voting. Counselor Buchanan.
I just, I wanted to pull out eighteen six.
Were there any others before eighteen six or I'll go to Counselor Buchanan?
Thanks, Mayor Achill. I really enjoyed reading the report from Newmont. And I was very struck by a large number of donations and sponsorships made throughout our region. And just really impressed by the corporate generosity that I saw from Newmont and I just thought that should be highlighted. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Buchanan. Okay. Not seeing anything else. Okay, if there's not anything else from council, I hesitated a little bit. I'll look for the motion to adjourn. Counselor Buchanan, Counselor Ray, all in favor? And we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Have the Ormiston press? I don't think so.
Because it's the
Right. Right. But I don't understand the duplex, but that part doesn't make sense. Not at all. We would have never said that it would have duplex, even in an overlay zone.
They, they could have had
In the previous? I don't think so. The duplex part didn't make sense to me at all. Yeah. I think so too. And I think that yeah, after. And I think like